Okay, by the time I like to call the meeting of the policy committee to order. If we could have an approval, ask for approval of the agenda.
We'll call first.
Before we approve the agenda.
Do we?
Okay, let's have roll calls.
Roll call, Broneman.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Katie Henry.
Here, you have a forum.
I move we approve the agenda for today's committee meeting.
Second.
They moved in second and to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Broneman.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Chairman Henry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. I did earlier this morning send over to Rob and to Angie and to Tom some definitions that I have drafted up for this. Can you, can you take these, Rob, and put those into the working document for now? Please? I have no idea if I've, for example, on the term final, when we final an account, I have no idea if I captured that correctly or not. So that's something you guys are gonna need to certainly look at, you know, the added account holder authorized user. I, I did the best I could on these. But I had no idea. And so, but I do think it's valuable for us to, to go through them to see if we, we captured them. And it certainly doesn't have to be today because I know that you guys are just seeing these, but so I'll defer to the committee as to how they want to proceed. They want to go back to the document, they want to hit the definitions or what?
I would, I would assume that there are going to be others that are added. I thought we were doing it at the end to find out, you know, key notes of all the ones that you wanted definitions of, but I'm fine if you want to go through them now, but I assume that as we go through, there may be others.
There certainly may be others. That's, that's for sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say something along the same lines of if we're gonna continue to add to it, maybe let's just do a review. It's kind of a final step, but keep, keep putting things on that list as we need to.
Okay. And Rob, take us where we left off, please.
Scene was right before the start of section seven.
So that last paragraph, or we, do we complete that?
The endless, you just saw that the individual liability.
I haven't circled back. But we, which you know.
Seven.
Circle back my seven dot O.
The circle back to seven oh one?
That's what you said.
All right.
And maybe you didn't circle back now. At a later time.
Yeah, I think, I think some of that was definition dependent. So yeah, let's circle back at a later time. We can go into seven dot zero two, I guess. So, um, so seven dot zero two. Customers having this change in status of the designated account holder must notify KC PU of said change. Death, divorce, and their children.
We differentiate between the primary account holder and designated account holder. That's just a, that's not in here anywhere. It's just. Some places I've, we use pride, I've seen primary in other places, like this is designated.
Right. So in this one, we're stating that the, like, say, for example, the account was in my name and I passed away. And then Jonette is living there, so she should be the designated account holder now.
The, you were the primary?
The only one, like, for example, I was the only one on the account. So I'll give an example of when we would send an invalid tenant letter. We do automatic bank draft payments. And then we'll get a return list of payments from the bank and sometimes they'll come back as account holder deceased. So when that happens, cashiers will notify me. And then I'll look at the account to see if there's somebody else on there. And if it's not, if it's just that person, then I'll send invalid tenant letter, letting them know that, you know, we know the account holder is dead. If somebody's living at the property, please contact them so we can get services putting your name. So then we would have to designate an account holder. And then if not, then we would disconnect the service if nobody contacts us.
Is there, do you, do you see a difference between primary account holder and designated account holder?
So what we normally refer to as secondary, but yeah, there is a difference between designated and primary, but so we'll have pres- uh, primary, secondary, or designated, yes.
Okay, so what does primary mean?
Primary is the first name on the account.
And that could be different than the designated.
What does designated mean?
Well, in this example, it's the person who needs to.
What is designated account holder?
The person that needs to sign for service.
In the event that the primary account holder is no longer available. Is it always deceased or are there?
Most of the time, I mean, sometimes we'll have it for divorce, but sometime it's for deceased. That's the most.
So designated is really, I guess then I'm unclear on the difference between designated and secondary, but it's, it is in lieu of the primary.
Yes. Well, secondary account holders are already listed on the.
Okay, that's helpful. So one spouse is the primary, the secondary is on the count or someone else, as we talked a little bit about seven oh one, I think other people, they listen to our app there.
You expect the same if secondary passed away with the primary, then need to have it in.
Well, no, because then if they're secondary, we just, they know, well, yeah, they just notify us, but we don't have to like change the account or anything. We just remove the secondary person from the account and the account stays in the primary customer's name like it has.
If there is a death and there is a secondary.
Then we just.
Then we just make them the primary and we do not have a designated.
Correct.
Thank you.
The what rights does a secondary account holder have?
So they would be someone that's listed on the account, so they have the same rights. Who are equally responsible, but we have to designate primary and secondary right now because of our payment system. So like if somebody were to log into pay, they have to go in with the primary person's information. So that's why we try to differentiate between primary and secondary. So when the customers go to utilize our online services, they know what information they need to add to get set up.
But the secondary account holder is financially responsible?
Yes.
To add somebody that's not financially responsible, they just have access to it.
It would be authorized.
That one I got.
I know, trying to make it clear that we keep.
That one I define properly, so.
What was the one I'm sorry, what was the?
Authorized. So.
What's the difference?
You don't like designated, do you?
Nope.
I can tell. So let, let's just talk about how you wanna, do you want to have something different in that sentence if you?
Well, I.
Should we just take out designated?
That's what I was thinking.
I will, I will tell you that if, if we've got a lot of different designation for account holders of BP. And this just seems like a lot to me, but I'm just really trying to drill down as to what the designated account holder is. It's like, okay, if, if a primary account holder is no longer available to pay the bill, then it goes to a designated.
So do you want to take that out?
I don't know that I want to take it out. I do.
Change the status of the account holder must notify. And then if you want to, I mean, is that, is that, would that be better or?
And then you can just take it down in the next.
Do customers know today to, to provide a designated account holder?
You mean if something were to happen?
Yeah.
I would assume.
I mean, I don't know. I, I, I don't.
And then how many times do you guys go through?
I can speak for myself. I would, but I mean, I can't speak for everybody.
But I saw on all of her accounts, wherever.
No, I mean, just something, when my dad passed away, we couldn't leave his name on any of the accounts.
And we had to switch everything over to my mom. So I would think that somebody would know that if they in a situation with a divorce or in a situation with someone that passed away. Because we do have people that reach out to us that says, I need to change this account over because it's in the name. And it's that person. So I, I, I'm assuming most people know, but.
Can you ask your question in a different way?
Can I ask it a different way?
So when you say does people know, that means does BP inform the public or does people automatically?
That's what I meant.
And I just know.
I mean, because I just, I think this is, um.
I can tell you, I don't think BP informs.
No, and I, and I'm not saying that, you know, that's the responsibility, because to your point, I mean, but I'm sure you guys deal with more than your fair share of people who have not, you know, put an additional user of some kind on the account.
Right.
What happens when there's not someone re-designated, I guess, for lack of a.
So then, I mean, basically, a lot of times they'll just call in and then we just ask them, you know, what happened? And then we'll look at the ownership of the UG and sometimes they're already registered as owner. They just didn't think to call to have it changed over. And if that's the case, then, you know, we just saw what they need to send in and we'll get the trade.
And all of that is to prevent shutting off of services, right? So there is someone responsible, pay the bill. In the event that they, they death and there's, you know, you know, designated account holder at some point, service just shuts off because it's a vacant home, right?
Yes. That's why we send the letter because, I mean,
Yeah.
And then that gives people, if somebody is there, it gives them the opportunity to contact us.
Sure.
That makes us aware of it as well. If somebody we never know, and let's say the services were to final, somebody were to final or they get turned off. Well, when it comes, if it's not, the account's not paid, it comes to collections, we're trying to collect.
Yeah.
On deceased person. So we're never able to do that. And then we may find out it was three years ago.
Sure.
They never check, change the name or where they've been using the services, but we don't have anybody that's responsible attached to it.
Yeah.
Don't you find out some of those situations, like where the spouse has passed, when they do that rebate?
Yes, yes. Yeah. That is, we find out some.
Right.
Not somewhat leaked also to.
I say when they apply.
When they fight for care also.
And sometimes they haven't done the paperwork at the UG like Gabby said, but we still allow them to take responsibility for the utilities.
Right.
Where before, because it's a long process, sometimes it's a really long process. Sometimes things go into.
Probate.
Probate. So we had to allow that so that a person could continue to live there and get the utility.
But can they become the designated account holder if they don't occupy the residence? Like, for example, I was a pass away, right? And my sister started handling everything. She's unlikely to move into my home.
Yes.
But there was still an interest in while they're figuring out what it has to do with my home.
Correct. Yes.
Well, then I'm like, I'm, I'm really tripped up on invalid tenant, right? Like, we send out a quote invalid tenant notification.
Sounds harsh.
I mean, it does sound harsh. It, it, it does sound harsh and.
Invalid account holder or invalid, that's probably an old, an old term or an old.
I was gonna ask, is that just the term in the policy language?
Actually, it's. Actually, that's something we put in.
Twenty seventeen, yeah.
You changed it to invalid tenant?
I'm sorry?
You changed it, the verbiage to invalid tenant?
We wrote it in there.
We wrote it in seventeen, we wrote it.
The top, the naming might have came from another utilities as well.
Because that's most of what we did.
But was, it wasn't anything before, we just wrote the policies in twenty seventeen.
And, and that was.
Me, sounds like a renter.
That was to address the situation.
What it sounds like.
Valid account holder, I'm, I'm not sure. But that was to address the situation mostly to help people who hadn't done the paperwork. But they're saying, I don't want these services turned off. I need to put it in my name. It was like, you're not the owner and owner is deceased. And that made it very hard for them.
Yeah.
And so we had to come up with something that was more helpful.
No, I can see how that solves that, you know, pretty significant problem.
Do you guys have a different suggestion for how we can, what we should call it? That's fine.
Does the communication itself use the same language?
Yes.
Is it like a form?
It's, we just mail them a letter and it's called invalid tenant letter. And then in the body of the letter, we explain what happened and tell them what they need to do to set the account up, if they want to set the account up, and then give the number if they have questions.
Because eventually if we do not get a valid person, and we will have to disconnect the service because we don't know who is going to be paying it. If we, if Gabby looks it up and it, the person is deceased, at this point now, it, it needs to maybe notice that. So we allow them to let us know, but we don't want to just continue the services when somebody may say, oh, we weren't going to pay those and that wasn't my bill.
Maybe use the word term account holder instead of tenant? Or something like that.
They don't, they don't have the account.
Hmm? Invalid account holder.
Yeah, that's the.
They're not the account holder.
They're not the account holder. So if we say invalid tenant means to me, and maybe this.
Who's the invalid?
From, it means that there's somebody in there or not that is, is not the person of record. And so we have someone actually, like you said, staying there, maybe living there, but they're not the person of record. So it is invalid for us. And so I'm not sure how we would word that differently because they're not the account holder yet.
And the intent is to make them the account holder.
Make them responsible. We allow them to be responsible, which a lot of times is what they want to do.
Yes, they, they don't want the service.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just want to be.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, let's not get tripped up on it today. I don't like the term, but so we can come up with something else sort of based on this discussion. But I mean, completely understand where, where you're coming from on it. Just, I think we need to we need to work through some of some of the designated account holder and so, some of that stuff because is the designated account holder always designated by the primary account holder?
Yes. So even if we wanted to add somebody on the account, the primary has to authorize it, approve it.
Secondary authorized?
Of the secondary, once they're on there, yeah, then they can add somebody because, yeah, so if it's just, I guess, yeah, I will say that if it's the, if I'm, like, if I'm the only one on my account, then I can add somebody on there. Then once somebody added, they have the same authority as the primary. So, yeah, they can add somebody. Yes.
But I couldn't call in and add myself to someone's account, like even my mom's. I can't call in and add myself to my mother's account. She has to add me. And if she adds me secondary or authorized depending, then that would depend on what type of rights I have on that account to do different.
Yeah, I, I, let's consider insert is with the company.
And, and they, in, in the situation, the designated or the secondary or the whatever, where they do not have to be a tenant in property.
No. So we'll have that like with some, like Jonette was saying, like the example with her mom, we'll have some people that are calling and assist their parents if they're around, so they'll add them.
Brett said, when he's his sister, so.
Yep.
So invalid tenant, it's, they may not be, they may not live there. I mean.
Right. But if they're already on the account, then this wouldn't even pertain to them. Like if Brett had already designated his sister on his account before something happened, then she could call in and.
Only if there's, is nobody else.
Correct.
I, I mean, we don't even have to use a term for this, right? I mean, I, I get it that that we are and, I mean, we're gonna send a notification. And I understand we want to call the notification something. I get that.
Responsible party?
Perhaps. I mean, that's something that is certainly less harsh.
Yeah.
And so we could be asking, yeah, responsible party and let's say they, they to, someone can, needs to identify who the responsible party is or something.
Right, or not on rec, or not on record or.
The practice makes complete sense. I think it's just, if I got a letter that said invalid tenant, it sounds to me like I'm being convicted. Squad or something. But, but I, but they set it aside, I think it, it absolutely.
Yeah, no.
Problem that needs to be solved. And so in my example, and just for the record, Brett has not pre-designated someone, which is why I'm thinking through this, but.
I would like to go ahead and say that I did pay my bill and it's today and it was, everything looks good. So. You're welcome.
But I have flexes in here to follow.
I'm pretty sure I had a late fee on it and I just.
I didn't want it again. Sorry, Brett.
No, but I was just gonna say, like, whoever's receiving the letter, right? Again, in this case for me, a family member does not occupy the dwelling. I don't want it to imply to them that they need to, right? To, I don't know if that would be a comment that, that just, as we look at that language.
A member of the public category, any of these people.
So we're not having customers, I mean, people.
Do we normally interact with the public during policy meetings?
No. They have their opportunity when he goes to the board for, on the regular session for adoption.
A work session when we go?
Not even a work session.
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry. He's wanting to address it.
Dr. Hill, we see that you have your hand raised and we appreciate your attendance this morning. During a policy committee meeting, we do not take pu- public comments during this, this period. And so we, we appreciate your interest and concern. You certainly have shared some of those with me prior to now as well. So we're going to, this will wind up going to a larger work session where we traditionally also do not take public comments. And then it will be taken to the full board eventually when the policy is worked through. So just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged your attendance, but, but let you know sort of how we, how we work here. So thank you.
Disabled the ability to raise hand, but just didn't mind.
Sure. Thank you, Rob. Now I see that we've called the entire section invalid tenants.
Responsible customer section.
Responsible customer.
Yeah.
We'll work through this. And I, I mean, just on my, and this is one thing, you know, in looking through some of what we've gone through prior to today. You know, and again, I know this is tedious work. As I read this particular section, the first paragraph of seven dot zero two, I would, I would switch the order of how this, this paragraph works, right? Notwithstanding the the other issues we've talked about. You know, we need to talk about what this, you know, what a change in status means, right? So if it's death, divorce, whatever, that needs to come first. And so I, I, again, I don't want to bog us down in this stuff because I'm likely gonna, you know, wind up doing red lines to that effect and then share them back with the group. But you guys tell me if we want to bog down in that today because we can.
I think I'm inclined to keep moving though. Again, I think everyone's decreeing it's a really good practice. It solves the problem. It's just giving that order and terminology in a way.
Okay, so the next paragraph we're going to. So so if, if this, in this situation, I guess we just said that the person doesn't have to reside at the location. So that's not always the case, right? So the customer remaining at the location or the customer who will become the designated party, really, or the designated account holder. I guess that remaining at the location doesn't always make sense. So that needs to be adjusted in some way. And assuming that they, they may have new pot, deposit requirements. Okay, let's take this one at a time. May have new deposit requirements, and that is because this person's. What if there's a deposit on the account?
So if there's a deposit on the account and we finalize it, then it would be the same thing. That's the deposit would go towards the final bill.
Would you finalize it in this situation if they were?
So if, if there.
Would it be a transfer?
Wasn't say, so if they're not on the account, well, it is a transfer, but we're still finally the previous person. Like their account's still gonna final. So even if we're putting in somebody's name, we are transferring it, the other person's account is going to.
Why do we do that?
That's how we put the service in the new person's name.
So like if you have a divorce and someone's it's in their name or even two tenants and.
Right, but aren't you missing, aren't you missing the entire payment history on that location at that point?
Somebody else's credit now, right?
Right. Somebody else's payment history, somebody else's. So it'll just depend on that also, Rose. So like, say, say, when my husband are on our account and he's secondary on primary. So if I were to pass away, we would put the account in his name, but he's on there. We have good pay history, so we wouldn't run his credit. He's already established pay history with us. So if it's somebody that.
In my example, if I pass away and my sister inherits.
Right.
Place, then it's her credit.
Right. And then what if he had, I mean, just for example, say, what if you didn't pay your bill on time?
Sure.
But she has good credit. We're not, you know, if she's never had an account with us, we're not gonna go off of his credit. We wouldn't run hers. And then if she had good credit, she wouldn't get a deposit.
Is there a scenario in which there's a, I'm sorry, I'm very specific here, but there's a deposit and the deceased party, you know, has auto J or there's no, there's no final bill that needs to be paid? What happens to the deposit at that point?
Yes, it is credited and it's. Yes. So we can credit or like say the account finals, then we could issue a refund check.
Yeah.
To, who would you issue the refund?
Yes, I say, so say he passes away and his sister contacts us, we would ask for the death certificate. If we don't have, if we can't find anything that he's passed away, we would ask for the death certificate. We would get her name and then issue the refund in her name.
Unless he went through probate.
I mean, shouldn't the refund go right to the estate?
Is there always an estate?
Not always.
Right, so.
A lot of talking about my death, right?
Really.
Some after this.
A lot of us have died recently.
Brett, you had started along questioning around the new deposit and then we switched over and talked about the old deposit for a while. Did you want to go back to the new deposit?
I think that may have been Rose.
I think Rose.
Yeah, I was saying. The next person needing to make a deposit based on their own credit.
I'll just move that down to the last.
But if it ensures it.
I think, I think that was, Rose to speak this answer to this question of, you know, is there a follow up to that?
Second part of the question was and or charges to the payment plans required. What does that mean? Second part of the question was and or charges to the payment plans required. What does that mean? So we've got the new designated person, designated account holder, and potentially there may be a deposit required based on the the run of this this person's creditworthiness and and or charges. What does that mean?
I'd like to say that if there was a payment plan and it didn't include the charges that we put on, if there's a deposit or something, they can't go on with that same payment plan.
So.
Mm hmm. That's what I'm thinking.
Well, and I was thinking, um, equal payment. So I will say we've done that. Like if a customer's on equal payment and we're changing the account over, we will leave them on equal payment. Like we'll set up their new account on equal payment. So then if they had an arrears, that's gonna transfer over to their new account on their equal payment and then they'll just keep making their monthly payment that they make to pay the arrears down.
Rather than having to zero that immediately.
Correct. Like what we would have them do if they were just passed due, we would have them just pay the current B P P amount to the transfer.
That's allow to maintain service even if the old account had a balance that was due, right? That's us being flexible.
Yeah, do you think it's supposed to be changes instead of charges?
Changes to the payment plan.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine a scenario in which there would be
A charge.
A new charge.
Right, it should be a change. A change of the amount.
That's the exact same as what's.
Good, I started with.
I don't know, but.
The R sometimes is.
I'm reading your picture.
It's just a copy. I think it's supposed to be charges.
Then we need, then I need to know what those are because I don't. I I mean, th- this is the thing, right? I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to be as transparent as as the utility can be with respect to, you know, the fees that we have in this separate document, right, in the fee schedule. I don't know what that would be. So if it's something that's identified in the fee schedule, then let's let's call it out. I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what what that would be. That's just an oversight word.
And and you guys, again, let's not get bogged down in it. Let's flag it.
Yeah, he's got it. He's got it. Can you identify it there? Yeah, should it, should it be changes? If no, we need to identify what charges are.
And the one thing I, the one word I would add in there is existing before payment plans. Because that's really what we're talking about, right? We're talking about the payment plan that may have been payment arrangement or whatever that may have been in place with before the designated account holder came on board.
Right.
I mean, we can say that whole thing if you wanted that information more comfortable because I, I mean, and I'm with you. I I hear you.
Do you want me to go ahead and add existing before payment plans now?
Yeah, I think Angie's thinking through it, so hang on.
Again, I'm not catching up.
We we were discussing this, so. Let Gavin give us the scenario we gave, so we may, you know, change this.
Yeah, it deals with Brett.
Sorry, Brett.
So in the examples that we gave were if it's a spouse or if it's a secondary, or even if it's somebody that was living there, if their ID matches the address on the account, we will not charge them a service fee. So in Brett's case where he was saying his sister is trying to put the account in her name, she hasn't lived there, she's not going to live there, we would charge her the service fee and then possibly a deposit based on her credit.
Whoa, 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 whoa. So we're transferring, Brett has died. All right, your sister's taken over. So on any transfer of service of an account where we're doing a couple of keystrokes, we're charging a customer seventy five dollars to do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be.
I think that's bad policy.
That's totally like setting up a new account.
I I hear you, but I think.
We have to get all the information in, we have to run checks, we have to do everything that we normally would have to do. And they would have to provide that. And then all of that information still has to, we have to make sure that it's valid information, so. It it's just not like doing this to do this. We still have to finalize the one account. So it's doing the whole process.
It's the same process as if someone brand new signed up in any other instance.
Right, that person is taking that time to to now validate information, get out everything, run the credit.
What does that be? Is that a cap setup or a service connect?
The service fee.
That we're never calling that by the way.
That's only in the instance that someone who is not residing or has that.
Yeah, if they're not listed on the account, um, or they, if they're, say they send in their ID and it doesn't match the address, but if they've been living there, their ID matches and then we don't charge it.
No scenarios, you're never turning off service and turning it back.
Right, it's just, uh, yes.
Maybe we look at another a different fee for transfer of ownership or something like that, you know, to cover a possible credit check and things like that. I mean, you're not actually shutting off service versus.
We have a third party do um, our credit checks, right?
Seventy five dollars does cover that. What's the cost of a third party credit check?
I can't think of it off the top of my head.
Seven dollar, I think it's like ninety cents. It's definitely sub two, but it's per call, so. The only reason I know that is we were thinking about adding to the online service app and our concern is that if we let the customer trigger that by entering information, they could potentially reenter that bill a hundred times and charge us. Yeah. But I guess then to Lori's point, that there could be a substantial difference between the the standard fee and looking at what are the actual costs that need to be covered in that particular instance.
So is the is trigger then for the, like if you adopted the new fee would be that you're not cutting it off? Because it's gonna be a thin line where say sorry Brett. Brett dies and his sister takes over the count versus Brett dies and someone moves in, but maybe he on the property or he or they take over the lease, I mean.
I get that, so.
So like.
Scenario more.
Right, like at what point is that a new tenant versus someone's
Right.
connected to him that's taking over to help.
Still a move in.
Yeah.
Either way.
Move in.
Still have to move that person into that service.
Okay.
Looking at moving in them into the house.
Yeah.
But it's still a move in service.
Right.
Service, so it's still considered.
There's no cut.
Take that example to just another branch here. For you all, it's the same whether someone occupies the house, right? Somebody might need to move in and set up a new service. Should go through the same new service process as anyone else, but doesn't make a difference on the B P U and whether someone's moving in and starting that, it's just you're initiating a new service either way. In the definition, if we include what the fee is supposed to be offsetting charges for for us, that might be useful. So if it is a service fee or an account registration fee, that makes sense. If it's a connection fee and it was never disconnected, then. Yeah, so I think if we specify what it is we're trying to recover past for, that might make it easier to understand. In for us.
Could not have said that any better.
Did you write that down?
I need to use that again.
Got it recorded.
At what minute?
Could it what?
Be near a microphone. Wow, can you, sometime after the meeting, can you retrieve the old policy prior to this? Just wondering about the change charge if that was, if that was somehow inadvertently added. Do you need to look at the active policy that's out on the website? Yeah, not now, but sometimes later we can, we can take a look and review to see if that was something inadvertently added. But it does sound like, whatever we call it, there is, there is a charge happening somewhere in there.
Sometimes it's not as much as what we say is what we don't say. Because if we don't say that there could possibly be
Yeah.
this, then somebody says, well, I didn't see where you said you. So sometimes we have to be clear, it's, it may not, but there could be. And so sometimes you have to cover all of that just to make sure. You know, so I didn't see where that was in there that you could, you know, put any additional charges or that may be charges. So it's not always, in cases we say there's not always there, but just in case there is there, it covers.
But outside of.
This particular
service fee, I'm gonna use it for now, even though to Rob's point and to point we made before, we need to say what we mean when with these fees. Um, that that is an account setup fee is what that is. It's not a quote service fee. I don't care what the industry uses. We need to be more clear. We're going off of antiquated, you know, monopoly utility companies and saying, oh, well, that's what the industry uses. It doesn't matter, that doesn't matter to our customers. But the, that's the charge that we potentially are talking about here, right? I mean, there is no other charge that we're talking about. Then, then we need to identify that by its name, whatever that's going to be.
I guess then digging in on that word charges, is it in the, in the scenario you just laid out? Is that a charge to a, to the payment plan?
You're right.
No, it's not.
Because I think the word charges belong, but maybe not with that specific qualifier.
I have nobody to take it's.
But there could be
Yeah.
an adjustment to to the payment plan. I mean.
A change. We believe the R is supposed to be an in.
Perhaps it should be, should be using both words.
A cha- a change to the payment plan could be getting a new charge added. That could encu- that would encompass a charge. A change would encu.
And typically, the new payment plan would be over the max term length of payment plans, right? So we're on a three year payment plan and you, if if I died and somebody took over my account, they would get a new payment plan with the full term.
I said it wouldn't be the same payment plan. If they said, well, you know, I was helping before all of this happened and I know the type of day they think this much for months. But when everything changes, it has to be a new payment.
New term, new amount, new person paying it, like it's all to some purpose. But that old plan doesn't have to be zeroed before you begin, like if someone can in inherit whatever payment plan is, but then readjust it for the new customer.
Yeah, here's the, up here, I think we're.
So it's.
A little something different. I went from here to you.
Just make sure I understood.
It does say charges. It does, it says, uh, customer remaining at the location will become the designated account holder and may have new deposit and requirements and or changes to payment plans required.
Changes or charges?
Charges, I'm sorry.
What are you reading?
What's on our, what's on our.
On our website.
Said you want to know that that what's, that's what's on this.
Okay, so so really.
It does state.
Charge.
Okay, so what really, here's the, here's the, the universe of what could, what could come into play here, right? So the service has to be transferred into the design, the new designated account holder's name, right? They must bring the account balance of the previous account holder, primary account holder, the original account holder, I don't know what to call them, to a zero balance, right? There may be new deposit requirements. There may be a customer account setup charge, because that's what I'm calling it in my notes right now. Right? And or a new payment plan may be initiated. Does that cover all the scenarios? That have to come into play there?
I'm still unclear in that scenario. A new payment plan is for the new customer. So if the old balance is zero.
Then it it has no nexus to that past payment plan.
So payment plan then is encompassing of if the new person wants to do the equalized payments or like pay or anything else. It's not, it's not that they are paying off someone else's continuing to pay out it as a really.
Right, so say they, say they get billed a deposit and a service fee, then they may need to set up an arrangement when they get their.
Level pays at a payment arrangement?
No.
Okay, so a payment arrangement and a payment plan are two different things. Got it?
A payment, well, we call it equalized payment plan. So yes, if you're saying.
But that's a payment plan.
Yes, it is a payment.
Generically.
Yes, yes.
There are any other thing they can have other than a plan or an arrangement.
Yeah, uh, they can have an extension, but that's just like a five day to give them more time on their past due. Yes. So there's three.
Nobody ever offers me that when I'm late.
Could they bring in amount from their old service?
Previous one, we hit on the new one.
Could they?
You mean the designated account holders hold service that they may have had in the past with B P U or are we talking about?
That one.
That one?
That one.
Okay, so.
Question, could they bring that and that would be.
This is a question for you from Angie. Go ahead.
So could it be, could there be a payment plan because the designated account or the the new account holder has a payment or has a past due or an amount that they're paying, and so they transfer it to the new account and they're making payments for that, so it gets.
They're transferring money from another account?
Yes. Debt from another account.
Oh, so like say, say someone passed away and you're signing, you had an old debt.
Yes.
Then yes, we could start a payment arrangement on your old debt.
So that would be.
That could be, yes.
That could be a reason for a different payment arrangement.
Yes.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Some new definition.
Maybe. I I'm gonna tell you, you guys are gonna be real happy at the end of this whole thing when we start using definitions instead of eighteen words for things.
Perfectly fine with definition.
And I'm not sure that, you know, the board members should be doing this, but we are where we are at this point.
Policy will be definitions and getting into the house.
I will say that as we stand up definitions, we will start building our own less complex basically for the utility and then we will start looking at a data governance committee to like, should we accept those definitions or anything?
Can I get more pay for what I'm, for my extra work I'm doing, Mr. President? Is there a job I can apply for?
I'll give you a reference.
You? Okay, so going to your scenario. If there is old money associated, because it could be a credit that was never somehow
Well, get back to that.
We all know that that's not what you're saying, but. But you're supposed to give it back within two years. Surely they got back to the customer. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
You mean a credit from an old account?
Yeah.
So a credit from.
But if that designated account holder, that if they're, who's taken over new here.
So in my mind, if they had a refund from another account, all that we require is that they provide us a forwarding address. If they don't and it comes back, then we we may still have it on our books. Other than that, it would have gone to them. But we do get refunds back all the time. We, I mean, we get them back all the time. It's like, you know, going to a, saying, I have money out there, but we ask for a forwarding address and that the primary reason is for your final bill and or if you have a refund on your account, that's what it states. That's possible.
So in that scenario, whether we're talking about old money, I think that that has to be a separate sentence and, I mean, it we might be able to
Be Yes, but that I was just also seeing if that would be a charge or change to the payment plan required that because that's coming over.
Well, since it's since it's not an old I mean, to Brett's point, this is a brand new thing. It's a new payment plan, new payment arrangement. It has nothing to do with the primary account holders situation here, right?
Right.
So so it doesn't have anything to do with the existing and it's not necess- I mean, it's new because it's just new to the customer, but I even took that word out. It's like, here's the things that can happen as a result of this. But one of the things that can happen is if there is existing money out there, positive or negative, it may follow this account. This new designated account holders account.
Yes.
And so I
Specifically called out as Gabby said, they would be eligible for any P P or new plan. But if they're transferring and they have bad debt, they have to bring that bad debt to zero or get into a plan.
Yes, and that's what I say on the equalized payment plan. We do offer that to customers that we have history on. So if it was somebody that was already living there, that's their history. We can give them the equalized payment plan. But if it's a brand new person, they would have to be there twelve months before we could offer them the equalized payment plan, because it would be based off of their consumption.
And not to back us up a little bit here, but I'm trying to since of all this, and I know I took us down a path of specifically what happens when there is no one who was living at the address who's taken over. In the event that there are other people were not, I guess, in this case, already a secondary account holder. But there are actual customers remaining at the location. You could, you know, use their ID to match that. How many of these things apply in that instance? Because I've been kind of fixated on the someone from outside is setting up a new account thing. Let's say there is a death, there is another person remaining at the address, we match that up. Is it the same set of possibilities for them or which are any of them different to that?
So it could be different. Like if they have good pay history, we're not going to run a credit check. If they've already been living there, we're not going to get charged on the service fee.
Even if they were not already a secondary
Correct.
person or or even listed as a designated.
Like we were talking about earlier, some people just aren't aware to do that. So that's if the address on the ID matches, then we do not charge them the service fee.
Okay. Trying, trying to think.
Or the account registration. Set of charge.
At what point, there's a diminishing return in how much detail you're going into. Because that is a much more simplified process than some of these other things that we're talking about, but a word to take to say that.
Customer accounts.
Seventeen. We beat it to death.
That's where we started.
Brett threw all kinds of situations.
And you need to bring Brett back to life. So in this last sentence that was added, the customer will need to this customer, we're talking about the new designated account holder at this location, right? Please strike will need to and put shall.
Didn't I just read the customer shall adhere to the requirements in section five security deposits?
But I was being generous.
Okay.
But I I'm perfectly fine with changing it to exactly how you just read it. Take out that are listed. Is that what you're taking out? Customers.
Should it go to the requirements? Yes, if you got same. That are. Customer shall adhere to the requirements listed in section five, same zero, zero security deposits. I still think the net change is going to be a longer policy.
We'll see. I mean
No, I mean, you're a hundred percent right. If we get it referenced properly, it might
Maybe we'll never ever have to do this policy ever again in the history of the world.
I know that I'm not going to rain on your oppies.
I mean, Brett's already dead.
Twenty years from now, somebody will say, twenty twenty four.
I almost guarantee it won't last twenty years.
Um. Seven dot zero three. Um. Can we call this person a deceased account holder? Instead of a deceased tenant?
Yeah, it's kind of creepy.
What else we asking for other than a death certificate here?
If they don't have a death certificate, we also accept an obituary.
Can we strike through legal documentation? Just legal? Because an obituary is not a legal document. I mean, I think it's great that you do. Don't get me wrong, but
So you wanted to read, may request legal including
No, they request documentation including, sorry. And shouldn't we have name of the new responsible party? Okay. So this next process where, hey, we may send a notification, isn't this the same thing as the the responsible party notification? That we talked about up above in seven dot zero one or zero two, excuse me?
Yes.
So
Can we consolidate?
Well, I I think we can. I mean, I'm I'm trying to figure out why, because so if we if there were a divorce. Oh. Now you're just getting divorced. You're no longer dead breath. Um.
You're beginning, missing some steps in there too.
I I hear you, but we're now divorcing you. Sorry about that. Um, so up above in in, I mean, we're making a special circumstance for death, and maybe that is just because we deal with it separately and on its own circumstance, right? Um, but in a divorce, do we ever ask for any documentation in that in those instances?
We can if, um, so say, for example, the house was in both their names and the person's a secondary, the primary hasn't called us to say that they want the service out of their name. Then we would ask for legal document or their divorce decree stating where they were awarded the property like their Yes, and then we, so then if the primary account holder call in, why did I get a final bill? Then we'll speak to that. We got this documentation that uh, the house was awarded to the spouse. And then I will say for deceased tenant, and maybe we can add that. So even if a customer just wants to finalize the account, say they don't want to move into the property, they're just calling, tell us the person passed away, they need to finalize. We would ask for, uh, the death certificate or the obituary before we would finalize the services. So I and I did notice I don't see that in there. So I don't know if we need to add that, but that would be a case that we would ask for it also, even if they don't want to transfer the service, just if they needed to have have it turned off.
So you want to put in here in order to transfer or finalize the service?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we'll probably be in front of transfer in order to finalize or transfer the service.
I'm sorry, what section?
Uh, deceased. Seven dot zero three, second line toward the end in order to transfer.
Or maybe it needs to be at the end, because then if we leave that other part in there, they're not, we're not transferring to the name of the responsible party in order to transfer service until the name of the responsible party or final service.
Yes.
Or to finalize or to finalize it now. Did it say final or close? Because finals are where those would be.
Depends on if you're putting it in the definitions. It's
It is.
Definitions and it's going to be defined.
It's probably not defined properly right now, so. Well. Um. Yeah, no, we have to consolidate that you, this is why we have more words, because we keep repeating the same things in multiple paragraphs. We've got to stop doing that. Um. So the these seven dot zero two and seven dot zero three. Um. Maybe they need to, you know, still have a separation for the deceased account holder, but we need to consolidate the um, the concepts, so we're just not continuing to repeat everything, so. Um. Bill, can I get a grant for this? Can I get a grant for my contribution to this?
That may lead into other conversations that. You're doing a great job.
Oh, I, that, believe me, I don't.
Hey, consolidate the concepts.
Where I can read it, okay. Well, I don't think we're going to consolidate them in definitions. I think we're going to consolidate the sort of what happens in these scenarios, like what charges could be initiated, you know, in these cases, not necessarily, well, no, it does. The deceased account holder has its own situation, so um, if a new responsible party is going to take over, see how good I'm getting at the policy, the actual policy?
Yeah, I'm going to take to actually do this.
Oh, I
Well, I think visual thought is easy.
No, I don't. I don't think it's easy at all. Um, but I I hope that at the end of this, we wind up with a a product that is somewhat more succinct than it is now, but also more clear than it is now, if that makes sense, so. Made it into the eights. Looks like. Um, okay, eight dot zero one. Race will be charged, bills rendered for the utility service first requested and or made available to the customer. Um. So like if I'm a residential customer, I don't expect to be receiving a bill until I actually generate usage. Maybe that's me. Um. So so if I, but I requested like on March first, but the actual usage doesn't start until March eighth, which which is my effective date.
So if you asked us to move you in as of March first, we would move you in if your usage didn't start until the eighth, you would start being billed for consumption once you have consumption. But as far as like your, um, electric customer charge, your water customer charge, that would be based off of the first, but the consumption, we only bill you when there is any consumption.
So the services would be in your name
Right.
as of the first. When you start using them is up to you.
Yes, so if there's no usage, you would still get the monthly electric charge and the monthly water customer charge.
Well, so but the services are made available to me as of March first.
Correct.
Like I could start using them then, right? See, that's my, that's when I asked for it.
Yes.
So i- is there a need for first requested? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what the distinction is there. And I understand, like, there are certain instances where, you know, a customer may say, hey, I need service at my location on X, right? And then BP is ready to go on X and the customer really is, and they're like, why did I get a bill for, you know, I I get that, but isn't it really just the day we made it available?
This also, I think, has to do with the fact that we were notified for many accounts, like they would sign up for the electric service and say they didn't want water, uh, only to come out to find out that they turned the water on themselves and stuff, so we would have to then say, okay, well, it was made available, it's too big. So say it was March first, we signed up for electric, April first, they want water. Well, they turned water on themselves on March eighth. So we need to be able to charge them from that point, not just from when they say they want it.
But they didn't request it as of March eighth, they just actually took it themselves. I mean, see what I'm saying? I mean
True.
And I'm not saying that's right. It's it's wrong.
Right, yeah.
But I mean, then we need to account for that, right? I mean, to the extent, you know, a customer, I mean, that's unauthorized use of service is what it is.
Correct.
So we don't, we don't do that practice anymore. We move them into everything to avoid that type of situation.
We what?
We move them into all services. So if a customer has lights and water available at the property, we'll move them into all services.
Even if they don't want? I don't know why it would. I don't, I really don't know. I can't come up with, can anybody come up with a scenario why you wouldn't want those water and electric if that's what we provide them?
We go, well, you're rehabbing a home and you were in turn, you have a need for electric and not necessarily care about where you're using. That'd be the only instance where I could think you'd have electric and not water. If you're not actually using that service, the only upside to not having would be any fees associated with it. So like in that that scenario, you know, you're rehabbing a place, you're not making use of the plumbing, but you need electric or
But you need electric or the work that you're doing. What is the downside of? Being signed up for water at the same time as electric, you're gonna have zero usage, but you're gonna get any associated fee.
So we sign, I will say, we sign residential customers for all services, um, because I know if the property doesn't have water, then it can be marked unfit. Um, so we do sign them for all services. Um, then again, also, if they turn it on or we turn it on, you know, whatever the case is, then they're already signed, there'll be no. Issues with having to build them for any previous service they weren't built for. But then the downside is, so say, like in your case, they're not using any water, they would get our minimum charge, and they would also, if there's wastewater at the property, they would be getting the wastewater. Charges from the U G.
And that would only be non-residential.
No, we do that. Residential, specifically for residential, yes.
I'm sorry, oh, delineating. When you do residential, they're automatically signed up for both, right? There's no option of leaving.
Unless it's like an apartment and it's only electric service, the services that are available, we sign the residential.
Like to strike first requested anywhere.
I don't think so, based on this discussion. I I do want to think about it a little bit, though. Because I do think we just need to make it clear in here somewhere, maybe here is not the right place, because this is. We have to make it clear that, you know, all residential customers are. Signed up for all available services at that location. Maybe. Now, now everybody wants to put everything in the. Not everything's gonna go into definition. So many definitions gets.
Do you know, does the city bill wastewater for people that are on septic tanks?
So I I'm on septic, but I do know that U G's rule is if you're within so many feet of a sewer line. They will still charge you for wastewater charges, uh, because you have the opportunity to hook up to the sewer line. So like, I'm not within so many feet of that, so I don't get the wastewater fee, but there are other customers that are on septic that do.
And they call in.
Yes, they do. And that's how I know, because they, that's what they communicated to us, is that why they were, that's why they were getting the fee. And I don't know how many feet it is, um, but they call the U G, they'll.
We haven't made changes to the wording yet. I'll make sure I didn't miss anything.
So I assume section nine term of service was deleted from here. Angie, because we don't want to have thirty day contracts with customers, residential customer.
We do, why do we take this out? It's electric.
Yes, that's it, because it's.
Power service agreements, is that what that's related?
It was more of a three phase.
Yeah.
Isn't that what that's related?
What is that? Yes.
Bill, what's a three phase?
Phase is more commercial.
Sorry.
That section there.
But these policies don't just apply to residential.
So this section here, we we took it out, but I'm thinking we took it out because it's more related to electric power service.
Yes, right.
Okay.
So. A while back, there was, there really, really wasn't any customer service policies that set aside from electric and water. We carved that out to create a separate set of customer service policy. And then there was some things, obviously, that. We needed to go back and kind of button up on the electric policies, uh, just to make those.
So that's really on the electric side.
Right, and this is, this is more on the electric side. So for example, if, uh. If there is a major, uh. Customer expansion, or if there are new large customers coming to town, we would sit down and, uh. Have conversation and have them sign up power service agreement. A lot of times they'll ask for certain things. Infrastructure, sizing and things like that, that, uh. We may not think they need, but if they certainly request that and continue to request it, okay, we'll install it, but.
So those are done on an an individual case basis?
Yes, yes.
I mean, is there any harm in saying that commercial customers who purchase something like this, I mean.
This is, this is on the electric side, though. We took it out of. Electric.
So it's somewhere else.
It's somewhere else, sorry, confused.
No, no worries.
It's it's all in the electric policy. Don't know that water goes there, because water don't extend their services much as electric onto the customer premise, so.
They have their development.
Yeah, they do.
I don't have anything on nine deer, nine dot zero one, unless you guys do.
I don't either.
Ten dot zero one. Um, can somebody give me an example of what other interval, other than monthly? Um, bills are rendered by B P U?
No payment plan that exists that wouldn't still be monthly.
Uh, flex pay can pay continuously.
But that's not, that's not B P U determining it, that's the customer determining if they are participating in flex pay.
We have discussed in the past, um, like U G fees could be charged.
How's that going for us?
Currently. Currently, everything's stretch month.
So, um, Gabby, when you guys issue like a thirty-three day bill or whatever, I mean, that's still a.
That's still a monthly bill, but it could be like, just to your point, it could be they moved into the middle of the billing cycle, so when they get their bill, it's only going to be a fifteen day bill or ten day bill.
But that's pro rated.
That's pro rated, yes, I'd say, but that's pro rated.
Until they get a forty-five day bill? If they, so it's already billed. And then they move in.
The only time that could happen, which doesn't happen often, is if an account's billed off cycle, but it wouldn't be like forty-five days, it would just be. Because I think our billing period is, uh, twenty-eight to thirty-three. So then if it's like thirty-eight or thirty-seven days, or yeah, then it'd be off cycle.
I I didn't understand that at all. And and this is one thing, I I will be honest with you. Many, many customers have asked me, and I do not know the answer to this question. Why is my B P U bill not due the same time every month? And like, I know when my Verizon bills do, which is why I struggle with late payments with B P U myself, but. I don't know when B P U is due. But because it varies. I don't understand why, we have ninety-five billing cycles, I don't understand why it varies.
So it varies based off of the day the meter's read and the meter's not read the same day every month, so billing will go in, set up the read cycles for that month, and then after it's read, we bill it.
Are meters like read remotely now?
Yes.
Yes.
But there there's still a process of bringing in that information.
Yes.
How many, how many reads like do we have?
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two, I think.
So Sundays you have twenty-eight days, Sundays you have thirty days, days you have thirty-one days, and that's why not on the exact same day, we gotta still get to.
We always say twenty-five days from the billing date.
Correct, it's the due date.
Isn't it close?
Unless it falls on a weekend.
It's close.
It's normally within like.
Within one or two or three, yeah, I mean.
Not when you pay it, but when it's.
You get two bills in a month.
Right, cycle one does, and I'm in cycle one, yes, that does.
We don't disconnect on like holidays.
Cycle one is mostly all a hyper.
Right, so that'll bump it out.
So that that pushes things around.
It's like you might have two bills due in March. February might not do till March, but then you get bill at the end of March, which is also due.
Because of a twenty-five day bill. Due dates.
Usually you're still billed once in the month, it's just when it's due.
Okay, I'll have it. Sometimes you have two bills due in a month.
Correct.
But the time from where we collect from time to customer use, sometimes at the end of that entire spring of when they're actually cut off, is probably the longest of any utility that. That we can, we can count. And there's been, uh. People that have suggested that we shorten the window, but I know how that can complicate and create problems for many people in our community.
How many billing cycles do we have total? How many?
I think we twenty-two.
I think we have twenty-two. We made the storm on our only twenty-five, but I think it's actually, and they're. Yes, yes.
I mean, we have like cycle eighty-eight and seven, so there's.
But that's for, yeah, when they need to sign.
Yeah, so those are.
They need to sign it, so.
If there, between the option to auto pay and the equalized payment program. Is there an option available to rate payers? To be set up where, you know, I guess it's still just have to be the automatic, not the V C P. Where only one, I'm just trying to think how it matches up with people's pay cycles, so where only one time. Twelve times during the year, each time in an individual month, where they would. Be billed. I know personally, within that twenty-five day spread, which is substantial. One could manually do that themselves, if they were really watching it and making sure. You know, like that February into March one, well, okay, I'm gonna make sure I pay this before March begins, because I know there's another one coming. In late March, but do any of our programs facilitate that being done automatically?
We don't know what their pay, what their income cycle is.
Right.
They can be a weekly, monthly, bi-monthly.
Customer does have the ability online to set up a payment schedule to pay on a specific. So they could go in and say, I want to pay it on the twentieth of the month, the amount due or. We would usually do, but they can also do, like, say, I want to do four hundred. And they have that ability where they can do on the due date or any specific day, which obviously you want to pay before the due date.
I was gonna say, is there any instance where I just choose, hey, you know, my bill usually comes around this time, so I'm choosing the. Twenty-fourth of every month that I'm actually gonna end up past due on something.
When when Gabby's not there and the reps come and ask me, I always tell them, let's look at the last twelve months, what's the earliest due date that they had and. About two or three days before then, so.
Okay.
Let's say it's a twenty-fifth, twenty-six, twenty-seven, so let's let's somewhere around the twentieth, have it paid on the twentieth, that way. They'll always be early and they won't have to worry about it.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, next paragraph. What other information would B P U use to render a bill to a customer if a meter fails? If if a meter fails. No, that's okay. So we're saying an estimated bill, if a meter fails, for whatever reason. Uh, we would do an estimated bill based on consumption during previous periods, or other information shall be rendered to the customer. I don't know what other information, shouldn't it only be based on consumption, previous consumption? I mean, I don't know what else we, I mean, otherwise we're guessing, aren't we?
A meter fails in the first month you've ever had service, I guess it's. But it's still just being an estimated bill based on consumption, just not your consumption.
I know previously, other agents had mentioned estimations of like. Again, you would estimate off of a similar business.
If you don't have history on that location.
Well, and it might be, yeah. Or other information, but that could go in their favor, right? Like, previous consumption was a restaurant that was. Open and then said, and then they reduce their hours by half, you might.
Or a different type of business.
Or a different type of business, so that other information might actually be to their benefit.
That's what I think. Yes, what I was thinking with Gabby, uh, when we were talking, I know there are times when they don't have previous. Usage to go off of, they go off of actual usage, so they wait till they have this, determine what that pattern is, I think. I'm saying this, I'm not. Think it may be three months, and they determine what their actual usage is, so they're gonna base that back bill on the fact that this is the.
So we're waiting for three months and then going to back bill?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Till they establish.
Well, it's real clear, based on current examples, we've all been shooting your way. That we are not notifying the customers if their meter has failed. We're just not. And so customers are getting bills for X amount of dollars, and they don't know why. Until they call in or contact a board member, unfortunately.
You mean the back bill? They do get a letter. If we back the customer, is that what you're asking me?
Prior to, I'm guessing, I mean, prior to.
We don't.
You're you're saying prior to, correct, prior to the back bill letter, you're saying we are not sending a notification.
Back bill letter, we do send a letter prior to a back.
Any of the examples I've given you.
Thing that we sent to customers, other than they they get this big bill and they complain. Okay, well.
There's a letter that's sent.
Do we have documentation of letters? I mean, because we've given you recent examples of this. We have documentation of letters because. I mean, customers are saying, hey, we we back billed, we back billed you, or B P U is saying, hey, we back billed you.
I can verify, but yes, I do, because a lot of accounts I look at, it says that a letter was sent to the customer, explained this, and it does, and and, Bill, you know, because it offers. No, it's kidding me, and prior to it. Okay, I'm sorry, prior to that, we wouldn't know, we.
But that's where I'm getting ready to go, so you don't even know, um, that that the meters fail. So how in the world are you gonna send something out three months prior? I mean, what we're, what I've, what I've actually got to do. What I'm actually got to do now is stop back billing beyond three months, until we can get all these reports. All this other information gathered. And and to be able to determine, when does the meter fail exactly, and then how do we catch up, and then how do we. Then take some some action against that in terms of the back billing, but but also have some conversation back with the section.
It's our failure rate, meter failure rate.
It varies. I mean, right now, we're we're probably, uh, let me get you the information. But we're we're, so so the system is right at fifteen years old, and so the failure rate has increased because that was kind of life expectancy. So we're now trying to re- this large quantities. Typically, when we first, when you first put it in, a failure rate is less than a half or one percent or something like that, maybe two. Point two, point three percent or something like that. As the meters age, then that that number is gonna increase. We have it, I don't have it on top of my head, I don't want to just tell you something and be the off. So are we, do we have a?
So are we, do we have a program in place where we are, where we're replacing?
Yes.
Meter, as they fail, as we find out that they failed, or are we going?
So both, 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 we are, so. Meters sometimes start alarming before they fail, and then we're capturing that, and then. But as the meters fail, that becomes a higher priority, so we're getting out there as quickly as we can and replace those, but we're also taking action off the alarms that come in. And trying to get them before they fail. So we got both went on with the electric and water, uh, we just met yesterday. Uh, had two, three hour meeting on how to get some of this stuff under control better.
So from the customer side, if I experience this. Still getting a bill, there's still other things on it, but let's say, electric in this instance, the meter failed. It's gonna be significantly smaller, because I'm gonna be charged for, for zero electrical usage in that part. Is that, is that? On the BPU side, when that happens, right, my bill still goes out, those processes are automated. Is there any sort of flag of, well, that's weird, this, we're showing zero electricity usage, that's for Brett's house this month.
That's what we're trying to quickly identify. So some of the reports, some of the reports show, showed some failure rates. Others didn't, and there's different reports that goes out across utility, I'm trying to organize and gather and put the same reports out to all the people that are. That need to be involved with.
I'm paying really close attention to my bill, I'm gonna notice this is a smaller one, but you know. I might not wanna dig too deep if I think, gosh, what a great utility.
Well, so there's two things going on. First, I mean, the customer's getting a smaller bill, we're not gonna hear from them, and I get that. And I'm not, I'm not in a camp to complain about the customer.
We do.
There's a lot that don't.
I, I know, there's a lot that does, but. We've had customers that have gone from, I've seen customers go from getting a fifteen hundred dollar bill consistently for years, to going down to. Couple of hundred dollars, fifty dollars, sixty dollars, and we do not hear from them. And so there has been a significant decrease, but to Bill's saying, we can't expect them to.
Yeah, so I, I didn't mean to put all customers in the same camp, okay?
And we shouldn't across the board.
Well, I agree. But really. So my position is, we shouldn't have to depend on the customers to notify us, the information is in our system and been updated every day. We just need to make sure we're gathering the right information and present it to the right employees, and then we should be taking action on it as quickly as we can.
So we have the water report, I know that, you know, that they look at that daily, and if they see an unusual. They notify the customer, like, and we've had customers that have left town and let their spouse running or.
That has come up before, yes, I'm not sure how frequent, but that has come up before.
But so we have a, we have a report that comes out daily that Steve Green or whoever looks at, and if there's a. An- anomaly in the water, they can, they notify. Do we have that same process in place for electric? It sounds like.
Well, so the information that we're trying to get is out of the MDM, because all the information is there. They're taking information out of the billing system, and the billing system is not the proper way to, where to get that information. So we need to go back to the MDM, the MDM, if the old one didn't deliver. What we had hoped, okay, so we're putting a new one in, and it goes in when?
Uh, our goal update is slated for three twenty-five. I do still have three severity one issues.
So part of what I've asked for before we selected this is to have a revenue protection. Module, software, report that comes out that shows us and helps us. Better understand all of these things that go on in terms of stuck meters, depth of service, every, everything around. How to better protect BPU against any revenue loss. And that's, I'm, I'm being told that that's being delivered sometime.
If someone's on the ETP, they won't be affected by this, right, because they'll just pay their standard amount, you know, I mean, they're. Well, hopefully, and, and this very much the true up doesn't happen within that three month period. It will just, it'll get corrected down the road, but if I'm a customer who's not doing that. And let's say I do notice, or we come up with some education system, right, but for now, just say I notice, wow, my bill's really low, I call and figure out what's happening. Is there an option for me? To say, oh, I don't wanna get stuck with a big bill three months from now. Do we help them say, well, you could, you know, make a payment of this estimated amount now, and then we'll just. Pay what's left, you know, three months in. Is, is there any remedy, I guess, other than just save some aside your money now, because you're gonna get a bill later?
There are two ways we can notify them. We got IVR to build our files. So reprogramming that, and having that pick up the stuck meters and then things like that is one. The other one's a text message that goes out, remind customers of, of their account status. So I would say.
But their account status isn't gonna say, hey, your, your meter failed.
Yeah, let's, let's say it is flagged, or I just know it's.
You, you can pay, you can make credit on your account, and, and so it would apply to, if, if that, if you didn't owe that amount. That credit would apply to future bills as they came out, and or when that does come out, we can always then put you on payment arrangement. We do offer, there's a stuck meter, and there's payment arrangement, and there's a, a big amount, we allow you to continue to pay your bill. And then for, and it's not even the six months, it depends on if it's been set longer than that, we will get. Backfilling three years, and I'm going from our current policy, and that may be changed, backfilling the three years from the statute, we'll say. We can set this up and we give them that same thirty-six months, they can, they don't have to pay it all at once, no, not at all. And so you do have options on there, so like, if you say, well, I know it's gonna be more, can I pay a little bit extra? Yeah, because it kind of, when it comes out, it will start applying that extra to any future bills. But they do, they can also get payment arrangements, it does not have to be paid off at one time, and they do get a percentage off as well.
It's gonna be a very short message, you could say, hey, here's something. That we'd like for you to contact customer service on, if, if it is a stuck meter, if we can program that. Or any IVR can do the same thing, hey, we'd like for you to call in about something pertaining to your account. And then, but when they, more detailed discussion at that point. Other than that, I'm not. I, I don't know that we are, haven't seen or heard where we, we're notifying customers in advance. Because sometimes we don't find out about it until many months or years later. This has been going on, going on for a while.
I thought they meant in advance of just the actual bill. That it's happening during that time.
Your board right now, that might not be flagged, and so. You know, it's hard, it's hard to send something out if we're not aware of it.
Um, okay, so next, that's not what this was about though.
I'm sorry.
So what we were talking about is, somebody going in a new place or whatever, we don't have history, so we're allowing them to have three months worth of. Usage, so we. Know, right?
Yes, I've seen where if they don't have any history in the account, they have to establish. They let them allow them to establish some history and then base it off of, and I think it's three months, I'll, I'll check this out.
Laurie, to your point, second paragraph here, we do do it on estimation. Unless there's nothing to estimate, which I would assume is over the vast majority of instances where. But, okay, so then flipping it back, if we're not always aware of that. Even if there is a history to do an estimate off of. That process doesn't necessarily happen, and then we're still back in the backfilling territory at once that's discovered.
My plan is to make sure that we are. So, so IT came up with some reports differently, and it was sent, sent out. I just approved a, a leading notice to, we're running thirty days on, on trying to get caught up on these new reports that just came out. And in thirty days, we're gonna revisit to see how much progress we're making.
Do we need to look at changing the word shall on that last line if we don't always catch it? I, I generally prefer if we can be, this is going to happen, I just, I don't wanna overstate that too, right, if someone says, well. Policy says this, and I didn't get an estimated bill, I don't want us to be in violation of our own policies. That is our preferred way that it would happen. But I guess, Bill, I'm asking you that too, because if that is something that is. Being updated. Is there, is there a, a fix where we go, hey, from here moving on, we are not concerned about ever not being notified? Or is it, we can make this drastically better, but there might still be instances where this process doesn't happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little bit cautious as to. Not moving the policy to a point to where we can't be in full compliance of it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree.
And, um, because, I mean, that's, that's our goal, is always, always be there, okay, there's a lot of moving parts with. What, what, what I'm, me and several others are trying to clean up right now, they're not. A little bit concerned about. Having policies are a little bit too restrictive, and then we certainly can't meet.
With that in mind, would you be more comfortable as that, that last line on. Second paragraph said, you know, or other information, maybe.
Okay, can I change the sentence around? Can I change the paragraph?
I still don't know what other information is.
Well, well, all right, so hang on a second, so Rob, can we go up to second line where it says an estimated bill? In that second paragraph. Yeah, an estimated bill. May be rendered to the customer.
Based on?
Based on consumption during previous periods, comma.
Consumption.
During previous periods, comma. But in the case where no previous consumption is available. Other information may be used. But to your point, other information, I think Angie gave us a point, but.
But mine would be broader than that, because you would have prior information, it just might not be.
But it's not previous consumption based at that location, maybe we can find the previous consumption at that location. Or I guess your point is, it is previous consumption at that location potentially.
Right, it's just maybe not reflective of the current situation.
So, Rose, you wanted to, didn't delete, shall be rendered to the customer, so other information may be used here.
Well, hold on.
To adjust.
To determine the estimated amount. Maybe used to determine the, sorry, maybe used to determine the estimated bill.
I'm still stuck on other information, so.
So, so Bill, my, my example was you've got, you've got a restaurant. That had to reduce hours. So, or. Or open, right, they'd been under construction, say, for three months, and then they'd been open, so. So that past usage may not be reflective of the current situation.
Good, but those are all. Kind of customer-driven decisions on their operations, stuff like this, not having anything to do with anything BPU's. It's going in our operations.
Well, so to your point, you don't want this to be subjective on BPU's part. To make it appear as though BPU's just willy-nilly using, right, no, I, I hear you, and, and that makes a lot of sense. Let's, I'm gonna make a note of that, and I'm gonna work on that, because I, I know what you're saying, and I, I hear you, and you're right. That is recorded, I said you're right, it's recorded.
All right, thank you.
It's a recording of it.
She said he was right.
Add it to every sentence. This may be a doomsday scenario, and so it's not something you really need to worry about, but we're specifically talking about failures to the meter. What if we had a failure in our network communication?
So, so yesterday, I know, I'm, I don't know why you weren't in the meeting, but, uh, but anyway. On the water side, you have a meter and a module that's connected, right, so sometimes the meter actually fails, or it was registered. And I didn't know there was two reports out. The other one is, what meant, mo- mostly a module communications failure, right? So one can happen while the other one's still working, and vice versa, so. We covered that, and Water said, hey, well, we just, we knew about this, and we've asked for these two reports, so we're great, I'm, I'm glad. Glad we, we do have that now, but to your point, it could be communication, or it could actually be the meter itself. It could be the entire network.
A single, yeah, a single meter could fail, we could potentially send a person out to a single address, but if a, a large section of the. Network went down, we're, we're getting, we don't have meter readers to send out to five hundred.
Right, but in that case, you would still. Presumably, the utility would still do an estimated bill based on, so if a meter or associated equipment or software. Because I guess, trying to look forward on that.
Or an equipment failure results. For infrastructure?
I mean, because it could be a lot of things, right?
Yeah, it could be a lot of things.
How bad, how bad if usage fails to correctly register something?
It's not available due to equipment failure. Other issue. An estimated bill. Assessment data is not available. Due to equipment failure.
What if it's a software failure?
Okay, so if, such a day is not available due to. Failure of equipment or software.
What if we say KCBPU network failure? Is that broad enough if we're not describing what the network is? We can certainly define the network if we want.
Glutameter.
I mean, it should be from. A to Z.
Well, in that situation, would we not be able to ever recover what the actual usage was, and they just.
Meter stores for like ninety days? Information, you know, they'll eventually report, so yeah, we can, we can, we can do that, so. There may be, I'm getting into the weeds now. So there's, there's a, the meters report every day, right, and sometimes there may be missing intervals in the reach and stuff. One thing that the MDM, MDM does is do some turn, some type of internal estimation to, to fill in those gaps. So it, so that happens anyway, but what we're talking about is something that happens outside of that, so if the network is down for three or four days. Yes, we'll have to still. Get a bill out, if it happens within a certain cycle, we'll have to get the bill out, you know, it may have an estimated read on it, it probably will have an estimated read, but. That data will come back eventually.
So you, it, it's not a, it's not lost totally.
Not lost totally.
And it can be recovered, it just might not.
Yes, and what we'll find is, is the estimation is really not that far off, okay, so if a customer gets that, and then. The next bill is not estimated, it's really not that big of a, of a variance between what they actually use and what, what they estimate.
What if we, uh, Rose, if a meter has been destroyed or otherwise fails to communicate usage data back to BPU, and this doesn't cover us?
Does that cover every single thing that could happen? Does that cover every single scenario that could happen?
Meter has been destroyed.
How about meter slash network? How about meter slash network?
I, I'll tell you how I retyped it, don't type this, I'm just saying, I mean, just to see, I don't know. Services supply do not correctly register. Due to a KCBPU network failure of any kind. An estimated bill shall be rendered to the customer based on consumption during previous periods. But in the case where no previous consumption is available. Other information may be used to determine the estimated amount or the estimated bill, but we know we're gonna redo the. Other information, I don't know, does that make sense? I mean, that's generic to, because it could be more than, it could be something different than a communication failure between the two points. You want me to?
Type it up? Yep, go ahead, and I'll start typing, and then I'll just delete that entire thing.
And so there is a section on, this is not. And so there is a section on, this is not the. Customer, the customer damages or the customer disconnects.
The, that's the destroyed.
The destroy and the fraud.
This is on BPU's end.
Okay.
If services supplied. Do not correctly register. Due to. A KCBPU network failure of any kind, comma. And if you go down to the next paragraph and just strike everything before an estimated bill. Yep.
Which states out.
Yep. And we have a note, do you have a note on here about? We're gonna work on. I'll take a stab at language for. What other information per?
I do have another information on that already, and I added notes to throw in school about language.
And destroying meter.
Keep checking your hours.
Just my way of giving back.
Destroy could be, uh. Something the customer does, or it could be weather related or something like that.
Are we done with that one for now? I mean, I really don't know, are we?
You could put a note in there somewhere, I'm going back and.
Doing like a corollary for if a customer damages the, the equipment?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'll add a note to that and.
We didn't say customer, we just said destroyed, so that could be. Either related to customer, related to, uh. The whole service got pulled off in a storm, and the media got damaged, so it can't be reused. Services. Really not even available.
Well, I mean. So when we talk to, when we talk about a failure, it could be due to a force majeure event, right?
Are there any gaps between what I just said, so here, here's the meter, we are. Service got destroyed, last read. New meter, new read, new meter getting, getting installed, uh. It's just, and I know that when, when the meter is destroyed. It's not gonna be any service, so service basically stops at that point. But the real service can use, are that you're getting started, getting damaged. And here's a new one I saw, so the gap between switching accounts from. Meter ABC to meter XYZ on the same terms. Is there any gaps, any loss? Anything lost between that? I, I don't. I don't remember there ever been, I'm, I'm not sure where we are.
Long as the hourly, or the fifteen minute intervals are coming in.
Right.
Any instances where the intervals have stopped?
Okay, so there's nothing that's gonna be. Peter stop because of some damage, and then we plug in another meter a few days later, start back up, there's nothing. That the customer's gonna experience. Maybe. Throughout that. Meter swap and restart, right? There could be a gap in the usage.
It's like in one bill cycle for like a couple of days, I think we would just. Not do anything with it, no, if it scratches over cycles, then that's where estimation can.
Right.
Because you got reads from both meters, so you're not gonna estimate like two or three days, yeah.
Now, when we go into the meter swap, we take a meter read at that time for the final read, and we record the reading of the meter when it goes in. And so, if there was usage registered on the meter that wasn't communicated back. That final read would be entered in, and we would give, we would build them for usage up to that final read, correct? Yeah. That's what we would, that's how we would catch it, when we swap the meter, we record the final read.
And we've got a tamper, theft section separated here. Janetta.
I'm sorry.
Here. Theft service, tamper session separate.
Diversion.
Back down here. Okay, so. Services supplies do not correctly register, blah, 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 failure of any kind, comma. A force majeure event, comma.
Any data, MAJEURE, right?
MAJEURE.
Definitions.
Events, we will, don't worry, I can assure you we'll have a definition, comma, or if customer damages or destroys. KCBPU. And this is really clunky. Usage reading, meter and/or related equipment. Is it always gonna be a meter? What if it's twenty ninety-five, is it gonna be a meter? I don't know.
We'll have to update its policy in twenty ninety-five to stop it.
Okay. That's fair.
Yeah, I don't think that is in ours. I think that is twenty ninety-five, maybe second. Just get there.
Can you just stop it?
Thank you.
I mean. Could you just stop it, if services applied do not correctly register? Instead of stating all the scenarios?
If I'm, and I am a customer of BPU, because we know, because I'm a late payer. I wanna know. I wanna know what the scenarios are. That could happen, I mean, obviously, it could be a BPU issue, it could be a me issue, right, I went out and like took a baseball bat to my meter.
I like the language in there.
I mean, and/or a storm, I mean.
The guesswork that comes, comes afterward.
Well, but I, just my last argument is.
You want to say I'm right?
Do not correctly register. I wanna go that far, Rose.
One use case I've heard in that would be.
Go on.
Interfering meters, so like, for the water meters, you used to be able to stick a magnet on the side of it, and that would stop it from turning.
Could you add the electric?
Well, and, and so the question is. And I know we're looking it up of whether or not we have a tamper or theft section, and I agree with you, I mean, let's, let's cover tamper here, right?
If you want to.
I, I mean, we can just do that as a scenario, that's gonna be an estimated bill if it's been tampered with.
Damage is destroyed.
Or tamper.
BPU, KCBPU, here. One more complication of this.
Yes.
Yeah.
It could be the screw regardless of who destroys or tambers with the equipment. It's true. If you have a lawn service that, you know, ashes into something. It's still gonna be an estimated bill.
Well, so then we say, or, so we take out customer altogether.
So, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, you're gonna say it's an estimated bill, if someone tampers with it. It's not, like when you, we were looking at that one that was on weekends, there's not an estimated bill for that, because. It doesn't look like.
They plugged it in, unplugged it and plugged it back in.
Yes. So, when there's a tamper, that's, that's when there's an alert or something that goes to like meter, we don't have that in ours, because they dampened all of the diversion fees and things on there. That they calculate, but that's not in, that's not.
Section because.
Not in ours.
Rose, I mean, it just is not in your work.
No, I just, I was looking, no, it's not in ours, that's where I'm thinking about.
Okay, tampered with, hold on a second. Because I'm trying to.
That's what she was saying, right?
You did, you, you did, that was a little scenario there, I thought you were dead. You're back. Because I'm thinking through, you know, I want the customer to understand. If they destroyed it, if they damaged it, you know, intentionally, and maybe we. You know, maybe we work in conjunction with a new. A new section on tamper and theft, because we should have that in here for sure, we should have a tamper and/or.
So you said it was in the electric?
So that's what I was going to say.
I'm okay with it being in customer service too.
All I'm, I'm saying is this, ours should, we should pull it up, because it should reflect it, there shouldn't say something completely different, and then ours says something, so I would say. Um, Rob, I was just, I'm trying to do it on my phone, so it's not very good, but I, I just went and searched tamper, and that is, and it says, um. Electric service policy, so I believe it's in theirs, so I would like to see, I'm sure you guys would like to see what theirs says, so that.
I would.
Yes.
Weekend.
You guys read those real quick while I'm gone for, don't change any words.
I gotta get that till you're right, but.
You guys, let's change. It's just gone. I'm sorry. I don't put tam, I, I, I mean, I.
She went on the search.
Service policy, now that I'm in the policy, I just searched for tamper to drop down to.
It has such a small thing.
Yeah, it's, it's for the large DG customers.
Anything for diversion?
Or unauthorized usage.
Oh, yeah.
Can you type in theft or?
It was a while back, I think. Should Tina and Carla change the unauthorized usage?
It has.
There's no unauthorized usage.
Okay, so it's not that either, unauthorized. Maybe send a defective service. So it's not anybody's. So then there be schedule, Rob, diversion versions.
Services bounds.
It's under diversion.
OCPA.
PA, what's PA?
Who is that, Lord?
PA. Yeah, what's policy, PA?
You know.
Administration.
Didn't you see the version a few minutes ago?
Administration.
It's administration.
Yeah.
Would that be in customer service or other?
Oh, there's.
The other.
Right there, go back up, it's just the definition, uh.
As the effect of circum. Kitchen or altercation of the accuracy of any billing meter indoor associated device, whether accidental, purposeful, fraudulent, or other.
So because it's defined, it should probably be down in the policy somewhere, because they're defining something that. Probably is in there, maybe.
Strange is, when I search diversions, you know, I think I stepped the.
Was that just definitions?
Yeah, this is just definitions, oh yeah, it's a definitions, uh, policy, so. I don't see an administrative policy out here.
It says PA forty-four, so I know it has to be some pages up there.
It may not be on the, on the website.
You check.
Be on our portal.
I know, that's where it says.
Admin services would be under there.
Yeah, you said admin services for it, but for me.
I don't know, I'm just that.
Well, there's a policy, scroll up, down, whichever way that goes to.
Oh, policy, yeah, policy is down on one of the links.
Yeah, right, there, often, right, 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 right.
There's PA one hundred and one.
Uh, here, there's specific electric and water diversion tamper.
We need to put that on the.
There's a fraud, in, in the customer service, there's fraud for information, fraudulent information, material misrepresentation. There's a section on that.
On fraud, and I think that's fraud when we get fraudulent information.
Right. Yeah.
That's for a sign for service, or if they're submitting fraud.
So if this is in there, I think what we did most of the time, if we saw that somebody else had it in their policy, if we even. Included in ours, all we do is reference that it's there, we just rep, we don't rewrite it, we're reps.
Yeah, but you're, so. A. I guess I was surprised that this one wasn't on our portals, on our website, yeah.
Can you send that one out to the pol, or to Angie, so Angie can send it to the policy committee, please?
Yeah. It's not there, and customer service is, it's a customer-facing policy, this one's not. So now we're talking about tampering theft over here, and then we got something that's not even available to the public over here.
So the customer doesn't know what it's.
Right, but. I think, I think the responsibility not to tempt, to tamper or steal.
The hard, fascinating part of it, I suggest.
He didn't tell me it couldn't steal.
Feel like there should be something related to tampering, theft in the customer.
No, I agree.
Even if it's a just a short section, and it don't have.
I agree.
Because that's the topic.
Then you don't have to put this part.
That overlaps multiple departments, not just electric box, so. Or water box, yeah.
And STC David Milhoff has put in now that PA one hundred dash whatever is not.
Do you want to do that, or do you want to put it in the customer service?
Well, I'm okay with putting a short diversion in the customer service policy, so I mean, I thought, I gotta read all this, Laura, I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, but.
Only David operating.
Is there a reason why that the policy's on it?
So the electric's in water service, is that mainly for people that are, uh, starting services, this continuing services? What to do for construction purposes, and otherwise? I. I didn't know this one wasn't out there.
What's this one called?
Let us, let us review it. You just asked for it to be sent out, let, let us review it to see if it worked. There's some, some reason why it shouldn't be put out there. So you'll have copies, just like, we'll go back and look at it again.
And see, and what I was talking about, if it's on there, like we have under condition of services. They've put that in there, and they note tape that it's in our policy, so we can.
Of that, that is big.
Our policy has been sent to you.
Thank you. Next paragraph in this one is failure to receive bill and/or notifications, does not release. Customer from obligation of payment. Can the, any other board member have any questions or comments on that particular? Can be, any other board member have any questions or comments on that particular provision? No questions or comments on that one from the board? Last one. Um, last paragraph there. Uh, I think I heard Jeanetta say that we, if we back bill a customer for X period of time. We allow the customer that exact same period of time with to pay for that back bill. Is is that accurate?
That's correct. So they'll get the six month minimum, um, but if they were back billed eighteen months, twenty-four months, thirty-six months, they would get that. Time to pay it off.
When you say the six month minimum, what do you?
Some customers, the back bill isn't large and then they just want to do the six months. So. But we do offer them the full amount of time and then it's up to them if they want that or if they want it shorter or longer.
Okay, so I think we need to add a sentence that reflects that the customer has the same amount of time as the back bill period to pay for. The charges billed.
Yeah, the other, I've asked this before either. I know I've been. Communicating back and forth with Jeanetta a lot, not not you all the time, but uh. But if a customer has a previous payment arrangement. Whatever duration. And this comes up. And then they're given that amount of time, does it go into the same payment arrangement?
Would stop it.
And reset it and take their previous payment arrangements, add it to this.
Just include their balance, whatever their balance.
Is that they can't have multiple payment arrangements on their account?
No, I say kind of want to allow it.
All right, hold on a second. Cause I feel bad for you. Um, after sixty dash five twelve. Put it parent. Parenthetical. Now, before the period, yeah. Uh, put the. Back bill period and make it caps like capital B back bill, capital P period. And I really never know if fact bill was one word or two. I've never known. And I've used it my entire career.
You know what to do.
I don't know if it's one or two back bill.
Back bill period space.
Uh, and and the parenthetical upper period or put quotes around back bill period. We may wind up defining this, so. And then so go to the new sentence you've created. Uh, customers will have. The same amount of time. As the back bill period, as the applicable back bill period. Make it caps there, back bill period.
Took on one word has hyphen between that back and billing.
Already found the answer.
Ma'am, as it's back hyphen billing. Interesting. Confident I've never used it that way. Time is the applicable back bill period.
No, I just, I deleted the space between back bill, so of course it's aligned through it and I added a hyphens.
That's the bad about track changes, right?
Uh, so you have.
Same amount of time as the applicable back bill period to pay. For such back bill charges, back billed charges.
Let's not do that.
Doesn't sound right, does it?
Anyone have any issues with that?
Do you know the second back bill, the last sentence could be for any such charges?
Could be. I mean, I I can live without back billed there.
Yeah, I think I prefer that one. But if I had a step meter for three years. I called in, you guys offered me a three year payment plan. I elected to do it for six months instead. During that payment plan, I wouldn't be able to keep up with it. I know that I could call back in and get a new payment. But in accordance with our policy, I didn't pay it back within the six months. If I jump call and set up a new payment plan. Didn't give them the full three years.
Well, and to, under that scenario, I I mean, if this is, if this is a back billed, if these are back billed charges. I don't care what the customer likes. They have that same period to pay them back.
Which is my understanding and way you were speaking, but it's, it doesn't sound like that's covered in policy. Alright, so if I, if I elected to do it in a shorter period. Do they lose those three years? I think in your mind, they don't.
My mind they don't. I mean, it would be from. The date of the back bill, right? I mean, from. The beginning of the three years, we don't start their three years at the end of the six months or whatever. We started back when the three years began. That's my opinion, I'll.
I don't, we have a tracking mechanism in our systems to.
Say it's all what the customer chooses to do. Now, if the customer chooses to do that and they do not pay it off in six months. And you're asking, can they, can they do a other payment arrangements? I believe at that time and it was. There are always going to be special circumstances. The time they say, hey, I thought I could pay it off in six months. I thought I was getting this. I wasn't able to. But they offered me this. That would be something that went through supervisor that says they did have that time. They didn't choose it at that time. And they would need to speak to, you know, if they're calling you guys to do this, I'm like, okay, they could have had this time. But I don't think. You can have three terminated payment, correct? Up to three terminated payment. If they exhausted that and they just kept doing that instead of choosing to do that, I think in that case we would have to say. Would you like to go ahead and and take what's offered in getting these? Because I don't know if we have to continue to offer that after.
You left the room, so. We've got the, there's a customer that has a payment arrangement. Here's the back bill payment arrangement. It all goes bottom in the one payment arrangement.
Right, we can't have too many.
Break those payment arrangements. What happens with the back bill portion? Not the, I can't pay my bill payment arrangement portion, but the back bill portion for stand, it's gonna be over the same duration as the amount of.
Yes, Angie. But that doesn't even say it will be like payments, that it says they have the same amount of time to pay for, so they could say. I'm a fan of the last. Day of the last day, you know, the last day of the three years.
It could.
I'm not gonna make a single payment. And so does this also go to commercial? Cause that could be a huge amount and you know someone's going bankrupt. Or you know, I mean, if you're not getting regular payments from them for that. And they're also accruing other, you know. Or they finalize their account.
And I guess we shouldn't wait fifteen years to um replace our meters.
To pay the charge.
I mean.
I bet, I mean, there could be, this could be a really.
Well, that.
I mean, maybe this should be for non.
And I understand that it's gonna be skewed right now because of the age of the system. But that's something. You know, if we're concerned about that and I understand why we would be. Then we also have to. Understand that the lifeblood of getting bills out to our customers is making sure that we have functional.
But I might suggest you at least get payments.
They're combining, there is a customer that has no meter issue, but they can't pay and they're asking for a payment arrangement. And for just a small fraction of those customers, this gets lumped in because there's a back bill each two and it all gets. It all gets.
How many customers do we back bill in a year? I mean, that's the thing. I'm, and I know this is hard, but.
I don't have that.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is without seeing what the date is, we don't know what we're trying to solve for here, right?
You may not, that may not be what they want. I mean, but.
I've added a clause and I can delete it back out if you like it. Period to pay. Plan so that we can show that it's going to be a monthly plan that they have to.
So can. Go go ahead.
No, I mean, cause.
That also then applies to fraud too, right?
Right, and that was.
So now you've got someone three years who's already. Committed fraud. And they may disappear as a customer.
And again, what I'm trying to figure out is. Are we talking about point zero five percent of our customer base or are we talking about this is a prevalent issue? Because I really don't know, right? I mean.
Right, I don't, I can't.
And and so if we're, if we're gonna start talking about one offs, right? And and because we've had the worst case scenario with one customer ever.
I I just wanna make sure I understand. I thought maybe I missed something, so maybe I did. So if you're repeating it, I apologize. But what are you talking about with fraud? Because if the customer commits fraud, they don't have, we don't make a payment range.
But you do when you said failure to sign for service, that could be fraud. Or any charges.
Failure to sign for service is not committing fraud. That means you give us some fraudulent information. Failure to 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 sign for service and we have to back you to the date that you started that.
So can you like give an example of how that would happen like a?
Services were already on the field and they didn't call us to get the services. Or to put it, be put in their name.
So like, is this more of a commercial issue or residential issue? Could be both. So.
That's not what that this is.
Like.
What circumstances?
Terminology here.
If I never finalized my account at my existing location, my existing residence. And the, it just kept, services remained on, right? Um, or I did finalize my account and B P U failed to turn the services off. At that location. So either one of those scenarios, right? Um, and and if that happens, then. The, the new resident. Came in, they have services and they just failed to sign up for them?
So let me, let me give you this, and I think this is the way we mitigated. A lot of that was, somebody was, would move in and say, I'm only gonna do this or I'm gonna be, so I just wanna sign up for electric now. We used to do that. Or I wanna sign up for water right now, sign about um during the day. We don't do that. When you sign up, whatever services are available at the location, you have to sign up. So you may not have usage if you're not using, but you still have to sign into those services. But at some point, sometimes. If we didn't, and service was there, they needed to start using that service. They would turn it on and start using that service. To me, that's that because you've turned it on and you start using. Or if it's already on and you don't sign into that, then we just need to back you because that's when you start up the service. And so there could be several instances uh. How that could happen.
But if I moved into the house. And I'm gonna blame Brett. Brett moves into my, I've already moved out. Brett's moved into my house. The services stayed on. I finalized my account, so there's no issue there. But we, for whatever reason, the services were not shut off. And Brett doesn't, now he's, now you're, now you're a thief. Um, but I mean, to, I mean, to. To Angie's, I mean. Is that not theft?
She's saying she.
I I mean, and I'm, I hate to like throw that around loosely. I truly do. But if if you're sitting there getting utilities at your place and you're not paying for them. Are we gonna assume that people are, they shouldn't be paying for the utility? Oh, I thought they were included at this residential property. I mean. That doesn't even make, so I mean, unfortunately, it is probably falls in the category of theft, doesn't it? Go ahead.
They may say a finalize, they may issue a finalized order. And order don't go out and disconnect the charge. So they, Brett comes in or Brett's having somebody uh. Having somebody go in and remodel the house. Okay, the remodeler don't know what status this account is in. Okay, and he's out there using water to clean up and do all this other stuff. Painting and doing up, you know. So is he stealing? Or the, or does it come back to, okay, B P U really didn't complete the process. It's the, the account should have been finalized. You kept, this meter should have been turned off. That's a failure on B P U's part. Now here's a contractor out there. Working, not knowing anything.
But that's my thing is, I mean, we've got two scenarios, right?
Not to steal.
Right, I know, I know, I know.
One, one is probably customer initiated. But one is B P U's negligence. Right? I mean, that's really what it amounts to.
So what do you call it? If it's negligence on the B P U's part, then we ought to eat it and and I use that.
I I believe that. I don't think everybody here agrees with that, but I.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that, I'm saying the water should have been turned off.
Okay, should have been. Okay, so you're saying they did find out the service, but we didn't. We're like, yeah, we were saying now.
Yeah, right now, uh, during the winter months, if somebody calls to finalize their account, we will not turn off the electric until the water's off, so the pipes don't freeze. So you know, we could, we have run into uh that where the water, the light meter couldn't get it off, so it had to go to light meter. Or to water department to get off, so it takes a little longer, or we have had it where it wasn't done and then all the services are left on.
Would all those scenarios possibly be taken care of by Ross, addition to that sentence that. There would be discretion on what an approved payment arrangement plan is moving forward that. All the non theft fraud scenarios, we have a pretty standard process for that, where that would give. Enough discretion on. And I'm assuming it's up to. You, if you had three years of back billing on your account, we may recognize that and let you know about it, but we may actually only charge you for a subset of that, right? We may give you a discount of some time. So an approved payment arrangement also gives us the flexibility to reduce the total amount.
So Angie, does, I mean, does that, do you think that if there's an approved payment? Arrangement plan, I like that. Now we're using both words for the same thing. Um, and if if it has to be approved by B P U. I I mean, the default has to be, we have to give you three years, but this plan has to incorporate the fact. That you're paying us at regular intervals over that three year period. Does that work?
So the only, and I'm think worst case, right?
I, I get it.
So the only, you know, if that's. There are cases where you're like, oh, okay, yes, absolutely, that's fair. But there may be some where you're like. If committed fraud, you're not gonna know where they are in two years.
Can the.
Criminals are gonna criminal, but also corporations are going to. File bankruptcy and the longer you let those debts stretch out, the harder they are to recover. And we have learned that and that's, I don't believe, fair to the other customers.
And you brought that other day, well, the other day in the stat game, and I said, okay, that is. That is one that we don't stop within this three month period while we clean up all this information that we're working on now. If it is fraud, then yes, there's. If it is fraud, then yes, there's no, there's no. No three-month period that's gonna stop us from going further back on that.
So. The exception to this rule that they have the same period of time or up to the same period of time. Is in instances of fraud. Or deceit, or whatever you wanna use for it.
Are you saying fraud or theft?
Sure. That, I mean, does that?
Yeah. I mean, that's.
We can't, you know, we can't solve all these.
Right, I know we can't, but I'm.
And, and I understand worst case scenario, I have no idea, I would have to imagine. Um, and this is not akin to any of these scenarios. But I have to imagine worst-case scenario of company files for bankruptcy and we cannot go collect. And you know, I hate to bring it up, is the T-bones. Has to be. I mean, truly, I mean, I can't imagine we've had a, a larger dollar figure than that one. Maybe we have. I mean, if one of the industrial customers went down. Probably a higher number than that, potentially, right? But. So I'm like, if we're talking about twenty thousand dollars, if we're talking about fifty thousand dollars, I mean, those are bad numbers for sure. But when we don't know the universe of how often does this happen? I mean, I, I don't know how often.
I don't have the.
File bankruptcy.
Quite often. And, and I don't have the statistics, but I just see the bankruptcy filings. And they are, there are quite a few, and it is really hard then, then they get.
It's hard for anybody, like somebody.
It's hard for anybody to collect from.
It's hard for some, but no.
I mean.
But if, if they're struggling, if they committed fraud and then you wait three, you know. It just, the further.
Fraud and bankruptcy are two different, uh, you know, there's.
We've already waited three years, but I feel like it's actually the term for the. Final payment fraud when service was first delivered is tops.
Right.
How does the Kansas statute play into this? Are we required to give up to three years, or that's just our limitation?
That's it, that's the limitation of, it's, you can only look back three years.
So I guess maybe this is leaning too hard on the inclusive language, but again, approved payment. Arrangement plan is whatever we decide approved payment arrangement plan is. And I, I didn't. Require ninety-five percent of the back pay to be paid in the first two months?
You know, that, that, I think that is way too subjective at that point. I mean, we're trying to give. You know, customers the rule of the road, right? And.
And it's also, we don't wanna put unique situations.
Sure.
Make them the, having to monitor, we're trying to get our system to do.
Broader than how people find it.
And I was gonna re-say, in those situations, I'm saying, we don't provide payment arrangement. If it's broad or there. The services, normally, they have the, like, they have the fees on there, because there, there's fees that are put out. Accounts that have. And, and they have to, they have to pay those. The services gets turned off when we find out that, that it's diverted up there, they have to pay at the zeros to get the service back. That, that doesn't apply.
I like the approach I described to the board on, now here's what the statute says, left a three-year. But we're gonna try to work to make sure that we cash this stuff much quicker.
Sure.
And, and if we can, then. Nobody's talking about three years, nobody's talking about a year. But the policy does say, okay, we're following what the statute allows us to go up to. Uh, that'll necessarily mean we can't do something ourselves to prevent ourselves from going that far out.
Right, I mean, we could, we could not. We could opt for a time that's lesser than the statute to backfill.
And choosing not to.
Yep.
But perhaps we put a carve-out where it is those extreme instances. We're not giving the three-year period.
Right. And I think the statute is, was put in place to say, if you, if it's five years or ten years, you can't backfill that.
Right.
It limits the, I think, it, it doesn't say we have to backfill, it limits the amount of time that we can backfill. It's just saying, don't go back any further than this. So that's why you have nothing further than the three years.
Yeah.
Of course, we said that stuff is different, but I think. That was put there to limit us and to say, you can go back this far, but you cannot go back.
Sort of one customary contact with you that he was actually, it went four years. Right, and he said, and he identified, and we had talked about four years, but we only said, we're, we're gonna go back three.
You could only go back three, based on that, so it doesn't matter how far it could. It could possibly potentially be seen once there.
Well, we didn't have to go back three, we could have gone back one year, three months.
That's right.
Yeah.
We could.
No, I, I hear you. But our policy, but our policy, I mean, because what our polit- We are not incentivizing BPU to get better. I know that that is what. You guys are trying to do right now, right? You're trying to avoid this. You know, old equipment, old infrastructure. Um, multiple failure rates, right, or you know, significant failure rates, I, I get that. But, and, and that's what we should be doing, right? We should be trying to get better on our side too.
Yeah.
You know, not just trying to um condition customer behavior. We should be conditioning our own behavior as well. That we don't run into instances where.
Right.
We have a known.
So here's, here's, here's something that I spoke to, uh, there's language in our, I think, bargain agreement where employees make mistakes. You know, some of this stuff falls into a category where, where these mistakes cause this much damage to BPU in terms of. Lost revenue and things like this, we could take action with, you know, disciplinary action against those employees. That are making these type of mistakes, and I'm, you know, and I'm asking everybody to take a closer look at that. Okay, so to your point, yes, we're, we're, we're working on this on, on a number of different ways. At the same time. I don't even want it to get to that level. I want, I want to make sure that we are. We're properly training, properly documenting, properly identifying everything that it is that we can, we can use to make sure that we're capturing this. Within a ninety-day period, and then we're only going that far. But I don't want the policy to say that, because. If you're saying, you know, our policy only ninety days, aren't you twenty days? Who knows what's gonna come up that, that is gonna put us on the top.
Understood, and I'm not asking to change the policy at all. But to Tom's point. Um, y- you know. We, we could choose to do things differently. We're not based on um experience. And if you have a policy that's too limiting. Then you can't account for, you know, a potential one-off that may wind up being extremely costly to BPU, right?
Right.
So. Um.
Do we just add a clause at the beginning of that last sentence that says except in cases of?
Literally what I just typed. Go ahead, read it, because you're reading what I'm typing.
Except in cases of, I don't know, theft and fraud, whatever term we wanna apply. Yeah.
It puts that wrong.
Because the first part stands no matter. What, we can go after back billing up to three years in any circumstance. I would propose diversion or fraud. Okay. What, what, yeah, whatever language applies there the best. And outside of those special cases, we work with customers to, you know, give them up until. That a matching timeline and. Approved payment. Now, if I'm reading this and I have been accused of diversion or fraud. Um, are we then going to define what the approach is for those?
No.
I don't think so, because it's, it's.
That says you get this long offering on here, and I think the implication is you don't get that period.
Right.
BPU can just demand payment.
Yep.
I don't disagree, I just mind you guys.
Uh, I like that addition.
Why do we call theft diversion?
Uh, because. There are ways to do theft that could bypass the tier, um, so I could either pipe around the water. It is still theft, but like.
Ceiling, ceiling.
I, but like, so I can go to your property and see that you have been stealing water or electric, or electricity, but I have no way to know how much.
That's irrelevant for this purpose, but. Cause I don't care if it's.
And diversion is the process, and it's the triggers and it's the reports that run off of, that's why we call it diversion, but I mean, it's. You're diverting power from the network and regular sales through your personal use without.
Water, water, you're bypassing the meter.
Yeah. And a lot of the, a lot of the diversion on the electric meters is literally done with jumpers. Right, they get into the meter base and bypass the meter.
What?
So from, from.
No one's gonna have this data available to them today.
I know, but from an electric.
How often does this occur?
You know, does it's diversion investigation?
It doesn't happen that frequently, but it's something that, that we need to always have policies to.
And I believe they ca- they call it unauthorized usage.
Which really is what it is.
What, what'd you say?
Much nicer than theft.
That's why, yeah, that, that, that's what.
We could not say. Cannot say diversion.
Case of unauthorized use, study of fraud.
Divergence is probably an old school term, isn't it?
I think so.
Utility term.
It's a utility term that's used everywhere, so, I mean, it, it. Well, I know, but, but you got.
Look how progressive BPU's.
Yeah, but you got customers moving from all over the utility to become our customers, and they're using certain terms elsewhere too, so it is a universally used term.
If you're used to the term diversion as a customer. I mean, go back to average.
Right, where you have a meter. And you have a load. You have source.
Oh, now we're doing.
Is you are diverting power.
I, I hear you, I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense.
I'm just saying that the engineers have, have used this when they're talking about it, the meters and everything, and that's just percolated up the rest of the business. So for the board setting a new term and having that percolate back down is the better approach.
Thank you. In our everyday conversation, I would imagine our employees continue to use the verbial bill every day, okay? That our employees, I didn't say bill, okay?
It's a new day, new day, new day with the policies.
Can you use it?
Oh, it's gonna be defined, don't you worry.
It'll be version slash change of use.
Unauthorized use may also be fraud to.
Takey, takey, no babe.
Um.
That's the best, you know, babe.
I honestly don't know that I have it in me today to get on equalized payment plan, and I'm just being real honest. I got in last night about six o'clock and. And. It's not an easy one for me, but, and I'm not saying it, I mean, I just. I don't know if we have to have a. Yeah, these discussions go, have you been here?
Are you saying you think we're a place where we cut off?
That's what I'm asking for, Mr. President.
Okay, I, I agree, and I'm a little time constraint too, I have to head. Uh, drive to Wichita or work after this, so I hope there'll be a lot to do. So do, uh, because we said we're gonna be here from.
No, you can. You don't have to sit here.
Well, we do need to set our next session.
Okay.
So there's at least five minutes.
Okay, so we'll cut off here.
Yes, we'll begin with equalized payment program. At the next juncture.
Friday mornings continue to be about the ideal time during the work week for me. Flexible at, at time slots. While. Be such a. Done it twice that. Time works for.
March fifteenth. Fridays of March, anyone?
March fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I will have to leave about eleven, eleven fifteen. I will have a hard time finding a replacement, we, there's a. A funeral that most of the legal department will be attending.
Okay.
Fifteenth is the weekend for us.
You have to be in here.
Right, I mean, it's, you know.
It doesn't impact me at all.
Yeah, I will do it the eighteenth, for example, what I would do.
Right, I just would need to.
I said, would we, could we start earlier? I mean, would that be okay? Can we start a half hour earlier at eight thirty? No, we cannot, we can start at nine.
We can go without Angela for the. We can go without Angela for the hour or forty-five minutes.
Or just save the legal. Do we need her?
Well, no, and I'm not, like, are you okay that we proceed, this is all recorded, no one's saying anything they shouldn't be?
We're gonna take a vote?
Well, we can't.
If you promise not to lock the door, turn off the cameras.
And me without.
I think.
March fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Nine to noon, almost noon.
Yeah. That'd be fine.
Okay.
It'll be, yeah, I'm sure that, that, I'll, if I have any.
Got two weeks to sleep in.
So. Go ahead, I'll, before you adjourn, I've got something.
Before we adjourn, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the rules.
It would be before.
Before you, before, okay.
I don't have any.
If it pertains to this.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so. You got a copy on an email from UG. Reply, and I'll reply to you too, Rose, so.
Well, I didn't reply. I didn't reply.
No, 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 I know, I know, but, but this is something I had promised I would bring back to the board, so. So if you remember two years ago, uh, he passed a uh. Resolution to waive electric and water connection fees, piece of six thirty-five land bank properties and stuff like that, so. That he's been asking, it expired December thirty-first. And now just get an email from one of our commissioners, and I respond to him is, either talk to the board about. Uh, continuing that resolution, or whatever duration the board. Feels is appropriate. But I just need to know. How do you wanna go about it? Do you want to prepare the resolution, put it in a work session, or do you wanna take it before the policy committee, or how do you wanna do it?
Do we have data on that program?
My email too, so, but I haven't sent it, I was gonna, before I sent it, I wanted to have the.
I think it would be useful for the board to have data of regarding the usefulness and or success. Resolution.
I do have data, so.
Um.
So I can, I can say, I, I don't have to change it other than, yes, we're on moving forward.
Maybe the UG should come present to the board.
I can do that.
I'm kidding.
You want the, all the elected officials to come to guess?
When's our next meeting?
March. Now.
So I'll reply to say how I'm, I'm having a conversation with the, with the board on. Mechanics and how, how to get a draft, which will include all the information you're requesting.
Well, and I don't know, I don't know if Commissioner Davis thinks that I'm still the president of the board or not, but you may wanna include Tom and you can take me out of the stream. Cause I don't want there to be Angela to think there's too many board members on that one, cause I think.
Yes.
Didn't he also try to include Brett? But didn't, because I don't think he included the last part of.
Remove you all that, Tom. And uh. For all, I'll copy Tom.
And then you can just uh inform the board.
Yes.
The whole board separately, so that way I don't wanna.
I will, I will. Tom, how do you wanna proceed? You want, you want to bring it before the policy committee, or you wanna take it to a work session, or?
For how, what's the time, is there a time crunch that they're under?
Mayor asked me last year about renewing it, he wanted to come over and I said, well, wait a minute, let, let me. At least start the conversation with the board first, and now Commissioner A- Andrew Davis is now asking, and I'm following up with his emails.
Don't, don't we have some situation?
There's, yeah, there's some development that they've got teed up down here.
Yeah. That they're asking.
This is for East of I six thirty-five. East of I six thirty-five and also on land bank properties. East of I six thirty-five, and also on land bank properties wherever they are, and some of them go.
Land bank property?
Right. And we did it before, you did it before.
Is that a two-year or a three-year?
So, yeah, I don't know how long it was, I gotta go back and look, but so it was done under uh, not a resolution before.
Talking about anything?
And then it turns into a resolution, what asked me to limit it to two years, and then come back and let you know how well it worked. So. So now it's up for.
I still recall my vote on that, so.
I know, I remember. I remember how the vote went. I know.
I was a no.
You're. So I'll respond, I'll copy you, Tom, and then I'll uh we, we don't have to decide today, but you can let me know how you wanna proceed, uh, that'd be what.
And I was a no, cuz I didn't know that that was a good use of funds to be going to developers and not actual users of our service.
Yeah.
So that was just me.
And.
And one other.
Do you want me to have the UG come over and do on a work session? I certainly.
I was. I was, I should have.
We got some stats, it's.
So.
Can we trade off with, with?
Well, okay, we want them.
I can't imagine what it is.
So I was, I was promoting it, okay, and I'll tell you why, okay, there is a ton of investments we're making each of six thirty-five that we're not getting any that much return on, okay, and we can't abandon any of our, so, so even in the neighborhoods where we don't have, there's not that heavily populated, there's still electric and water paying customers, okay? And if, and if those lots became popular, repopulated, that means the revenue coming to BP, that means the tax dollars, and that hopefully lessens the burden on the rest of them, having to pick up that difference. So I'm all for economic development, this part of the city, okay? And, and, and in some small way incentivize that, the stuff out west can stand on its own, we've already done all that. But, but the stuff out west didn't happen without BP incentivizing a lot of that stuff for Piper, too, okay? I benefit by, and everybody else in this community benefits by it, so it's nothing new.
I.
It's just, you wanna do something for one part of town, but not do something for the other, well, okay, that, in my mind, that's.
But how long do we do that?
In a works, in a work session, bring the stats that we have, okay, we, we talk.
I will.
And then we'll, can we just make a, we don't need to vote on it or do whatever, we can just have a.
Well, you have to prove a resolutions at some point, because the resolution expired, and that wa- that was what you asked me before, was to wrap it into a resolution.
But doesn't take up to, to schedule that for a work session?
No, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't. It doesn't. All right, I'll put down that, that. It shouldn't be, I mean, just a few, it is entirely up to the board, yeah. I, I would, I like to see our maybe we found all over, so. So, do I have a motion?
Uh, this, Rose, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to, and a second to adjourn, roll call.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
O'Vanny, Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries, meaning it's adjourned.
Thanks.
Our next policy meeting will be the fifteenth.
Of this, yes.